That being said, I'll open the floor for nominations for the position of Chair. Yes.
Madam Chair, nominate Melvin McLawhorn for Chair.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will close nominations. All in favor of Melvin for Chair, please vote. Okay. Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Oops, sorry. All right. Congratulations, Melvin, as our new Chair.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll open the floor for nominations for the position of Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, nominate Mr. Tom Coulson.
Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Matt Fitzpatrick.
Are there any other nominations? Okay. Hearing none, I will close the floor for nominations and we will vote in reverse order. Those in favor of Mike Fitzpatrick, please mash your button. And Mike?
What have we mashed?
Um...
Hang on. Oh, we mashed two. We mashed two.
One for yes, two for no, for Mike Fitzpatrick. And Mike, if you'll just say whether it's one or two, one for yes, two for no.
Um... Well, I think that, uh... Tom would be a good Vice Chair.
Okay.
So, okay.
Okay. That fails and we will move to, um, Tom Coulson for Vice Chair. Get you a new screen. Those in favor, one for yes, two for no. And Mike, just to confirm, one for yes, two for no?
One.
Okay. And that passes. Congratulations to Tom. So your Chairman is, um, Melvin McLawhorn, your Vice Chair, Tom Coulson. And that concludes your elections and I will turn it back over to you.
Okay, and at this time, we will take our break, a short break, to trade out seats and identification signs in front of us. Before we do that, I would like to thank the Commissioners for all the help and service this past year. It's been a very busy year for us as Commissioners, but all of you have done a yeoman's job and I appreciate the support and the help. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Matt, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Are you gonna be with us for a while?
Uh, no, I actually, uh, was getting ready to text Kimberly and let her know that I have to head into court.
Okay. Well, Mike, we appreciate your participation thus far.
All right. Thank you very much.
Bye, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Bye, Mike. Move to excuse.
A second is...
Has been moving properly, second that we excuse, uh, Mike Fitzpatrick. All in favor, let it be known by pressing your button. Number one, for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, you have been officially excused. At this time, we shall go with our presentation of the County Audit Financial Statement. Okay, approval of the agenda, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, a second.
Has been moving properly, second that we approve the agenda. All in favor, let it be known by pressing your button. It stands approved. Now we get to the presentation, presentation of the County Audit Financial Statement for the year. Elsa Watts and Brian Barnett.
Good morning, uh, to our new Chair and Vice Chair. Congratulations. As one of our duties as a county, required by the state, we are to conduct an annual audit once our fiscal year has concluded. We have worked with Martin and Starnes, um, out of Hickory, North Carolina, for years and years. Today I have with me Elsa Watts. Elsa is the lead person with Martin and Starnes who does our audit. She's going to give you a, uh, rather intensive presentation of, not intensive as the full audit, but a pretty good summation of our audit of our past fiscal year. I do want to let you all know that after we present today, our audit will be made available on our website for the public to view. We do have copies here in the building also. And before I do turn it over to Elsa, I do want to point out and recognize Chris McDaniel. Chris is our Assistant Finance Director. Chris is the, the head person on our audit project. He starts pretty much once the fiscal year ends in June, all the way up until November. So with that being said, I'll hand it over to Elsa.
Good morning. On behalf of Martin Starnes and Associates, I'd like to present Pitt County's 2019 audited financial statements. Some audit highlights. The county received an unmodified opinion. This is a clean audit opinion. And I would also like to thank Brian Barnett, Chris McDaniel, as well as the rest of the Finance Department for all their hard work on the audit this year. They stay in contact with us throughout the year and they're always timely at giving us the information that we need. They're wonderful to work with. We do appreciate all of their hard work and we look forward to continuing that working relationship with the county. Some information on your fund balance position for the general fund. Total fund balance was forty-two point eight million dollars. You had non-spendable items of one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Your stabilization by state statute was thirteen point seven million dollars and this calculation gives you an available fund balance of twenty-eight point nine million dollars. The LGC uses this calculation to compare you to other units. There was a decrease in available fund balance of two point two million dollars, which can be attributed to an increase in the stabilization by state statute number. And what that is, is basically your accounts receivable, less any deferred revenues. Basically, accounts receivable are not considered available as of year end, so that's why that calculation has decreased. And your unassigned fund balance for the year was twenty-three point six million dollars for the general fund. Available fund balance as a percent of expenditures and transfers out for the general fund was nineteen point fifty-seven percent. Then looking at your general fund revenues and expenditures for the year, revenues were one hundred and forty-eight point seven million dollars. This is an increase of about three percent. And expenditures were one hundred and thirty, one hundred and thirty-eight point six million dollars, a decrease of less than one percent. And I will detail this further along in the presentation. Your revenues for the general fund had property taxes at approximately sixty percent of total revenues. You had restricted intergovernmental revenues, which are basically your federal and state grants, at sixteen percent. You had other taxes and licenses at sixteen percent and other revenues were eight percent. Property taxes were at eighty-nine point six million dollars. This is an increase of about two percent overall, very comparable. Other taxes and licenses were at twenty-three point four million dollars. This is an increase of about six percent. Restricted intergovernmental revenues, again, these are your federal and state grants, were at twenty-three point seven million dollars, an increase of about two percent. And then looking at your major expenditure categories for the general fund, you had education, which came in at thirty-four percent of total expenditures. Human services was at twenty-eight percent. Public safety, twenty-six percent. And other expenditures were twelve percent. Public safety was at thirty-five point three million dollars for the year, a decrease of less than one percent. Human services was at thirty-eight point eight million dollars, a decrease of less than one percent. And education was at forty-six point five million dollars, an increase of about one percent. And this does conclude my presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much for opening to the floor, uh, the Commissioners in questions. If not, what is your pleasure?
I move for acceptance.
Second.
And we have a second?
Second.
Has been moving properly, second that we accept the audit as given. Let's vote. It passes. Thank you very much for your excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Let's manage to have now public address to the board. Do we have anyone who's signed?
No, sir, nobody's signed up unless there's somebody in the audience who'd like to come forward to speak.
Do we have anyone in the audience that wants to speak at this time? I hear none, we shall move on. Dr. Linker, is he here or his representative?
He may not have been informed of the change in times, so we may want to come back to him. He may be here in a few minutes.
Okay. Jan Elliott, is she in? Okay, she is here. Jan, you have the spotlight.
Let's see if we can do this.
Don't we have something for you down on that floor?
Do what, ma'am?
Don't we have something for you down on that floor?
The stand. Oh, the stand, I didn't bring the stand with me. You're just gonna have to keep me at this height. So let's see if I can get this up. So we can... Put my glasses on would help. Do we have a mouse? There's a mouse. There we go. Gotta get it up here to slide you. Trying to see all these little symbols down here. When you're half-blind, it's not easy. Okay, thank you. Uh, I am happy here this morning to present our annual report. You have in front of you, I think, a copy of the slides. Unfortunately, the report is not available. We had to take it back and redo it because of the suspension of Medicaid transformation, because I had a whole page in the report about Medicaid transformation. So you will get a copy of the report very shortly, it's just not quite ready right now. Our purpose, obviously, the Department of Social Services, is to improve the lives of our Pitt County citizens and we do that in a variety of ways. We, we help families build their own capacity to meet their own needs. And so, part of that would be things like employment services, childcare. We work hard to develop community solutions and we work with a lot of folks in the community as we do that. And we also work to provide resources to help people through the variety of crises that they may be facing. In addition to providing, um, those family-specific benefits that y'all are very much aware of, Medicaid, food and nutrition, protective services for children and adults, we work with our partners to develop community solutions. So here are some examples of some of the things that we did this past year to help raise awareness about what we do and to help partner with others in the community. We had a child abuse awareness festival in April during Child Abuse Prevention Month. We had a tremendous turnout, a great number of folks worked with us on this and we were able to develop some partnerships as a result. Other events that we've had over the year, things such as our foster care fundraiser at Great Harvest Bread. This was a collaboration with Teddy Bear Child Advocacy Center and Great Harvest Bread and we raised a little over eleven thousand dollars to help support our foster children in things like camps, Christmas things, helping if there was a crisis that we might need to have. We work with job fairs, a variety of organizations do job fairs and we occasionally sponsor our own. And obviously, we work in the Red Cross Shelter. So those are some examples of some of the things that we have done in the community this past year. You just heard the audit and obviously, we believe that responsible financial management is the single most important precondition for every service that we provide. If we don't have the dollars to do it and we don't spend them correctly, then we have audit exceptions, we have clients who don't get what they need, so there are a variety of reasons. So we believe that that is very important. Part of our financial management goals are in part that we offer a helping hand, not just a handout. So we support opportunities for client education and employment. For example, seventy-five percent of our clients that are engaged in employment and training services with our food stamp program are in some type of vocational training so that they can upgrade their job skills and get a, get a job or get a better job. We bring taxpayer dollars back to Pitt County. Pitt County citizens pay a significant amount of taxes to the state and federal government and so we work hard to bring those dollars back to Pitt County to support the services Pitt County residents need. We also work to prevent and correct waste and fraud. So we emphasize accurate decisions in our agency. We have a good error rate, a good track record in that area. We believe in efficient operations and one day we will invite you over to see some of the new things we're doing at the, uh, Human Services Center around registering clients who are coming in the front door. And we work hard to recover any unauthorized, uh, benefits through paybacks and court actions. So where does each dollar come from? You see that very large dollar over here on the, on the left? Three hundred and twenty-one million of that, or ninety-two percent of the funds that we are involved with by the work that our staff do, is coming from federal and state taxes. Collections and donations is seventeen million or five percent. Now that includes the fif, over fifteen million dollars that our child support staff collect on behalf of the children of Pitt County. We've included that in there. The county taxes are only about three percent of our total budget. Now you look at how each dollar is spent, you can see that the bulk of the money goes to support Medicaid services and that is clearly important because it means folks can work, it means folks are getting good health care in order to improve their lives and maintain their lives. Fourteen percent is going to the food stamp program or food and nutrition services. Child support, as you see, is fifteen million or about four percent of how the dollars are spent. Early education or childcare is nine million or three percent. And then the other programs, which includes all those things you see at the bottom of the screen, protective services, foster care, adoptions, administration, a lot of different things are covered in that forty million dollars or eleven percent. Certainly, we need to work with the community to prepare and, and solve problems. We've got current demands and we have upcoming challenges. Foster care, early, early education or childcare, Medicaid and services for vulnerable adults are all things that we are working really hard to deal with on a daily basis. The services for vulnerable adults would include things like our adult protective services programs, our guardianship programs and our in-home services programs. So talking first about foster care, our foster care caseload has more than doubled in the past six years. This is due in part due to a lot of the family problems that are very serious and then some of the seriously troubled children we come in contact with. The traumas that our children experience, severe, severe abuse, uh, which can be both physical and sex abuse, major medical issues and that would include mental health issues for the children and mental health issues of the parents. Juvenile delinquency, we're getting a, a fair number of children through the court system now who are juvenile delinquents, who cannot go home but who do not belong in the juvenile detention facilities. And we get drug-affected infants. Those are just some examples of the types of children that we are bringing into care these days. We brought in seventy-six children in the last, since July one, or, I mean, sorry, I'm sorry, in the last year. We have found permanence for ninety-four children. So our staff have been working really hard to find permanence for children and that's through the October date. Now, if you look at North Carolina as a whole, you can see that we are, we are running very similar and a little above North Carolina. This, there's growth throughout the entire state in the foster care service needs and that is consistent. And I can tell you that foster care can cost as much as six thousand dollars a month, all county money, in some situations, until we can find someone to authorize payments for those children through the mental health system or other programs that we have. So hopefully, we can get that done within a couple of weeks, but sometimes it's the whole month or longer. Okay. Childcare. Childcare is also a big issue for us. We are, the funding is not keeping pace. The demand is growing. As all of you know, childcare is a very expensive proposition, but families have to have it in order to work. And it's, for me, childcare, if you have good quality childcare, is early education for children, very important. It also is an economic development issue. If parents can't work, then it's very difficult for us to have industry. And it helps lift parents out of poverty, which is what we all want. So childcare, again, very critical for us in Pitt County and around the state. Our waiting list has never been this high that I'm aware of. Again, we are very much like North Carolina. You can see the numbers of children enrolled versus the waiting list. Again, illustrates, just like it is in Pitt County, demand is clearly outpacing the dollars available. Looking at Medicaid, our Medicaid enrollments and annual recertifications have increased by one-third over the last five years. And as you all know, we've talked about in the past, the various laws, et cetera, have increased our financial risk for any errors that we make due to that legislation. Again, as I've said, medical care is critical for healthy babies, for growing children, for our Asian disabled and to ensure that folks get to work. So now if you look at our enrollees and you compare that with the state, you can see that we are outpacing the state with Medicaid enrollees. And, and, you know, I, I don't know why that is, other than we do good outreach. We work hard with folks to try and, and help them get qualified if in fact they do qualify. And we have high poverty here in Pitt County. And so I think all those things play into that, but I can't, can't guarantee that that's the whole thing. Now, the next thing to think about is that, um, our population by age group, and I say this because we're getting ready to, to face all those issues that age is going to bring us. We already have had, seen an increase in our adult protective services reports. As the population ages, we are seeing more and more guardianship cases. We have around two hundred or so on any given day. So we are looking at a forty percent increase in our over eighty-five population and a thirty-six percent increase in our sixty-five to eighty-four population over the next few years, so by 2030. So we need to be thinking ahead as to what that's gonna look like and how we're gonna serve folks in those age ranges because they are going to need services. So we need to be planning. The, the only other thing I would add that's not part of any of the slideshow is that we have about fourteen thousand families right now getting food stamps and that's stayed pretty steady. The economy has picked up, but folks, a lot of these folks are working poor. So we want to encourage them and this is one way to help support them as they try to move into a better place for their family. So, I ran through this quickly. Anybody got any questions? I will provide the report when it comes out to you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Elliott, any questions from the Commissioners?
Okay. Thank y'all.
Thank you for your very fine report. At this time, we, uh, having, Dr. Linker, I think he came in and certainly want to welcome you here.
Good morning, Chairman McLawhorn, Commissioners, Mr. Elliott. We've got a couple of quick things to show first, I think. We've got a little video we put together just for you. We're gonna do the video first. Before we start with the video, I do want to introduce some people that are with us today. We have several Board members with us. Board member Melinda Fagundis is in the, is here. Our current Vice Chair is Betsy Flanagan. Then we have our HR Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Velicia Council. Next to her is the Curriculum Instruction or Education Program Services, Dr. Steve Lassiter. Next to him is Matt Johnson, our Assistant Superintendent for Facilities and Operations. And he'll have his opportunity to present to you in a couple, uh, back in, in January. Behind them, we have our in-house Counsel, Emma Hudson, our Finance Officer, Deborah Baggett, and our Public Information Officer over here in the middle, Jennifer, um... Johnson. I still get nervous after six years coming up here, okay? But not as nervous as the first time, right? So we do have a quick video to show you that we put together. One of the things we've been focusing on is this, this school year, as we're transitioning into a, into a new strategic plan, is really the, the, kind of the, the theme of the school and that's our every single day. You've seen that around the schools. So quick talk about, let you see here, here about every single day.
Schools, we focus on the success of all of our students every single day.
Our teachers, staff and principals work hard to ensure that our students are provided with a rigorous and personalized education in preparation for the challenges of the 21st century.
With thirty-eight different campuses, we are not just a system of schools. We are a unified and thriving school system.
We believe that every student can find a great fit here as we encourage individual discovery and expression.
Every single day, you will find students learning through dual-language programs.
Discovering the arts.
Diving into STEM curriculum.
Connecting with our community partners.
Visiting college campuses and participating in our state-of-the-art technical education programs.
The growth of our students begins with a commitment to invest in our staff.
As a result, our teachers and principals collaborate in professional learning communities and work together to solve school-based issues.
Educators are trained in equity and resilience to build culturally responsive classrooms.
Teachers are even given the opportunity to participate in comprehensive leadership programs.
At Pitt County Schools, we are proud of our students, staff, teachers and community for building the future together every single day.
Every single day at Southridge High School, we give kids a hundred percent effort in ensuring their success in all they want to be involved in. That's our mission, to, to give them everything we have to ensure that they have the opportunity to grow and learn.
Every single day, I'm committed to making sure that our highly effective educators are engaged and empowered to do what they need to do to take care of every single kid.
Every single day, we strive to ensure that children know that they matter in everything that they do. And our job is to make sure that every single day, they are the best that they can be.
Good to go. So just, there is our every single day theme that we've been presenting and sharing with everyone over the last five or six months. We'll talk more about that as we go through. This is just a break, quick breakdown, most of which you've seen before. It's not showing up quite, at least on my screen here, it's not showing up with the category names. That's broken down into race, the breakdown of the student population. And we also have our 38 schools. You remember, we created the second early college at East Carolina University last year. That school is running extremely well. We're so many proud to have two early colleges here in Pitt County now. In student enrollment, we'll see some graphs, so that is actually up. That number obviously changes daily. As of Friday, it was actually up another 10 students. It was 23,519. We're running on last year's budget. I guess that's not a surprise to anyone. You've probably heard about that. So those are the numbers that'll, you know, we expect to hopefully get something in the next couple of weeks, a couple, maybe a month and a half, we expect something to happen. But those are the numbers from last year. There is our average daily membership. You can see we've, the big dips, if you remember, in 2010 was when the age changed for kindergarten. And then 2015 to 16, and 16 to 17 were the two charter schools that opened here in Pitt County. The last couple of years, we've seen we've come back up to over 23,500 now. Just some good news and things that's been going on in the system. Our graduation rate is still above 83%, if you remember, two years ago, it was 86%. So it has dipped a little bit. We've met with our graduation coaches and our high school principals and middle school principals to make sure we're keeping the kids online. We have expanded our Avid program, and now we're at 20 schools, 15 schools. We'll expand again next year to 20 schools. So we're expanding that, and that's just a way to keep track of our students, to make sure that they're, we're keeping invested in them, and they're invested in school so they do graduate. That's just part of the, one of the programs that we'll look at. Just some of our numbers. You've heard me talk before, I'm not a huge fan of the way the state grades schools, but I do think it's really important to look at the growth of our schools. And 33 out of our 37 schools met or exceeded growth. Pitt Academy is the other school, 38, they don't get a growth score. So 33 out of 37 did meet growth last year, which is the best year we had. The year before that, where 31 of 37 schools met growth was the best year previously. So we've had, instructionally-wise, growth-wise, two great years. 89% of the schools have met or exceeded. Grade level proficiency has continued to increase. If you go back to my first year, it was about 50%, 50.4% in my first year. It's gone up every year for the last six years. In this past year, we had a nice jump of about 3%. So really excited about that. We had six schools that exited low-performing status. We're down to six schools that are considered by the state. And again, that definition is, in my opinion, is flawed a little bit. We'd also had eight schools increase their letter grade. We had three schools this year make an A. Last year, we had one. This year, we have three. One of those is Hope Middle School. The other is also Innovation Early College at East Carolina. So both of our early colleges across the state, across Pitt County have made an A. If you actually look across the state, the vast majority of the A schools are your early colleges. They're the schools that are making A. Some real, real nice highlights. North Pitt has exceeded growth for five years in a row. None of our other schools have done that. Only about, across the state, only 12% to 15% of the schools a year exceed growth. North Pitt's done it five years in a row. That's excellent. Just real quick about Hope. Hope has been around for 12 years. 11 of the 12 years it's been in existence, Hope has actually exceeded growth. Then also, the early college at PCC has exceeded growth for the fourth year. We'll come back to talk about the early college at PCC some more. 12 schools exceeded the state growth rate. 28 out of 30 K8 schools, if you take middle, K8, and K5, 28 out of those 30 schools exceeded or met growth, or at least met growth. And the other two, I'm sorry, increased their proficiency. The two that did not increase their proficiency actually met growth. So you can actually meet growth, and your proficiency scores go backwards, because it's actually two different sets of kids, right? So one kids, set of kids graduate or move on, you have a new set of kids. So you could actually meet growth, and your proficiency could actually decrease a little bit. You hate when that happens, but it can happen. Our career development, we've done some, the last couple of years, we've seen some great things happen with our, in our career technical education world, our career development. This past year, we started a program called Tradesformers. You've probably, hopefully, you've seen that written up. But this is where we, last year, we started with three businesses who have taken on some of our kids as interns and apprenticeship programs. So these students are getting real opportunity to go to work and are working in those buildings, and they're quickly becoming, according to the business owners, the favorites in the company. The employees liked these young students coming in and taking them under their wing and helping them grow. That's expanded now to six businesses this year. So we'll be able to expand this program, and hopefully, this is something that Tradesformers is actually going to be patented, so it's going to be our program that the businesses and Pitt County schools are running together. Obviously, PCC is involved in that as well. We started something last year, right at the end of last year, with Thermo Fisher, called the Pharma K-12 Workforce Development Training. This year, it's going to be all of our high schools. We did a quick pilot last year. We were able to get about eight or nine kids from North Pitt. The day after they graduated school, they graduated on Friday. On Monday morning, they were going, working in the, with Mark Phillips in the biotech industry and getting trained on making pharmaceuticals, solid pill dosage, right up here north of the river. So they're getting trained on that, and two of them actually started jobs working for Thermo Fisher that summer. So these students didn't know where they were going at that point, but now they're actually having jobs and getting a good job, you know, here, right here in Pitt County. So that's good stuff. The CT concentrator graduation rate is 98%. Obviously, that's always a high number. Number of credentials we're earning, going back two years, is 7,700. Grow Local, if you remember that, last year, we teamed up with the Chamber of Commerce and sent over 2,700 kids in one week through all the businesses in Pitt County. PCC, East Carolina, all the businesses, over 100 businesses were involved. The numbers I saw for next year, or actually, next March, was over 3,700. I said, please stop. We still have to figure out how to get the kids around to all these businesses. So that week, all, everybody pitches in, everybody drives a bus, make sure we can get the kids to their location, get them back to school that day. But a huge success, obviously, by the amount of turnout we're seeing from the number of students who wanted to go back this year. That number's obviously gone up about 30%. We're certainly thrilled with that. And just a note, there were 240 businesses across the state that participated in that week-long event, and 100 of them right here in Pitt County. That just talks about, to me, that just shows what Pitt County's about. They care about our public schools, they care about our students, they want to see that moving forward. So we're certainly thrilled to have their business partners we have here in Pitt County. Project Search does not get enough attention by anybody. Probably, that's my fault. But Pitt County Schools is the only North Carolina school system to have a Project Search program where we take students in our Exceptional Children's Program, we send them to Vident, and they do job training. We have seven or eight kids every year who work in that program, and as far as I know, the only closest one is in Cincinnati or Cleveland, somewhere in Ohio. So we're certainly proud of that program, and one, I know they're trying to expand into other businesses for these students. School options, this year, we have 24 open enrollment schools. 22 of our schools are community eligibility provisions, which means that the whole school gets a free breakfast and free lunch. So that's 24, or 22 of our schools. We're always trying to figure out how to expand that, but we have to obviously work with the federal guidelines on how that works to try to make that viable for the school and for the school system. Right now, we have over 1,100 students enrolled in our own virtual academy, Pitt County Virtual Academy, not the North Carolina Virtual. It's just a way for kids, if the schedules just don't line up, or if they, you know, some schools, you only have two or three, four kids who want a class, so we can teach it and they can take it at their school, or online, or during a class time in one of their labs. So we're working on expanding that to where we're actually going to have more of a blended model. We'll see some changes on that next year as we try to do some differences in some of our math classes. So we can see, maybe seeing some floating teachers going to be able to teach multiple, at multiple schools, to different groups of kids. So really trying to do something different to meet the needs of our students and our schools. We have a lot of themed schools, that's nothing new. You've seen most of that before. Would like to point out at the very bottom that the early college at Pitt Community College is a National One Distinguished School for the second year in a row. Remember, last year was the only high school ever in North Carolina to win it. Now, we've won it twice. So we're certainly thrilled with that school. We do have four restart schools, three that are already in restart mode, Faulkland Northwest and Griffin, and South Greenville. We're actually working with East Carolina right now, working on a new restart plan for that school for next year. So we're working on that. You've heard of the dual-language program at Bellboard. That program will expand to another dual-language program at Pac-Tolus. Student Services, we've talked a lot about that with our budgets the last couple of years. The desire for more social workers, more counselors to work with our students, you know, the social-emotional learning aspect of our students is, you know, the issues our students are dealing with on a daily basis, obviously, growing. So we've been working on training our staff members. You can see, a lot of our staff has been trained on the resilience, the reconnect for resilience, plus the trauma-informed care. We also are adding four new social workers/counselors this year. If you remember last year's budget, I think we asked for about eight or nine new counselors. Well, we got four from the state. So we'll be trying to fill those positions over the next month or so. We also had a fantastic Special Olympics program that runs every year in partnership with the city and county, and our Special Olympics. In fact, Rose has also become the first unified school champion for our Special Olympics program in Pitt County. And actually, it's the first one I've ever been involved with as a superintendent. So it's nice to see our students stepping out to reach and help and incorporate all of our students. Strive for Five, you may have seen some of that. That's our attendance effort, trying to keep our kids in school. Just keeping that aware, that you've got to be in school to learn, and making sure our teachers and principals are reaching out to kids when they're not in school, to make sure that we're aware of that. So that's just something else we're trying to do. We started that last year and expanded this year to have a real solid program. Pitt County Schools Imperatives, we're going to talk a little bit more about these. This goes back to our every single day. You know, every single day, we're trying to make sure we have the best teachers in the classrooms for all of our students and to support those teachers, so we have outcomes for, high outcomes for all of our students. And we're just trying to make sure that our school leaders are the best they can be. So they're working with our teachers every day. This is our Pitt County Imperatives. You'll see this in all of our schools. Do we bring a chart for them? We'll have a chart for you, so you don't have to read it on that. But that whole thing is designed to where everything is lined under the multi-tiered system of support, which probably doesn't mean much to the county commissioners, but in my world, that's kind of how everything's being organized nowadays from the Department of Public Instruction. So everything is under this multi-tiered system of support. We're embedding equity into everything we do, and equity is one of those things where you've got to look at it and to study and talk about it and decide, what does equity look like for Pitt County and Pitt County Schools? So that's what we're doing now, trying to incorporate all those things into our curriculum, our instruction, our accountability, the culture of the school, and how all that comes together. This is actually the first step, I mentioned earlier, of our new strategic plan, which will be rolling out next spring for the next five years, for 2025. So, but that new strategic plan, this will be the basis for all of that. We'll incorporate all that together, also be the basis for our Portrait of a Graduate. One of the things we started a couple of years ago, actually about 18 months ago now, building up for this, was what is a portrait of a graduate? What is it we want our kids to be able to do when they graduate? So we're building that now. And that came out through probably numerous meetings with Rotary Clubs and organizations and parents and teachers and principals and students. What is it that you should be able to do when you graduate school? What is it that the community thinks the kids should be able to do when they graduate school? So those are things we're working on as we roll that out. We'll certainly keep you informed of where we are with all that. Teacher leadership, this is, you saw the big jump in proficiency. One of the biggest things we've done over the last two or three, four years is really try to grow our teachers, and our principals, obviously, but really grow our teachers. And this is one of the things we've seen, our teachers are going through the teacher development leadership programs. You can see them there. We have what we call facilitating teachers. Those teachers work with younger teachers to make sure they're coming along, you know, but on a much more, on a much more of a tight framework. It's not like the old mentor program, we check on them every couple of days or once a week or whatever. But these teachers are working together, planning together, looking at the data together, talking about the students and how one group is coming through and the other group may need some more help. So you're getting a veteran teacher, one with special-trained skills to work with their younger teachers. And we also have 15 multi-classroom teachers, which is really a teacher who's actually overseeing three to four teachers at a time, and actually teaching in four classes with four teachers. So we're taking our best teachers and really trying to spread that influence a little bit. If you want your test scores to go up like we're seeing, and you want your proficiencies and growth to be there, you take your best teachers and put them with as many kids as possible. That's what we think of success. You see the teachers who are working with them. We also have our Key BT program and our Teacher Leadership Institute that's been going on for about four or five years now as well. Those programs are obviously going to continue. This all came about several years ago. I shared with you numerous years ago about our Teacher Incentive Fund grant. That was $16 million. We tied that along with a state grant of $5 to $6 million. You can see, this year's budget is about $7 million, a little over $7 million. That's put back into, almost everything is into salaries. So that money is being pumped right back into our community. It's also helping build a teacher instructional program. I'll talk about that in a minute. But that money is being spent on facilitating teachers, multi-classroom teachers, collaborating teachers, and the co-teachers who are working with them. And what that really shows us is, I think I shared this last year, we have over 400 of our teachers getting extra money from this grant. That's 400 teachers getting extra stipends, extra funds, and that's more than most counties around us have teachers. So we're really trying to take care of our teachers, keeping them here in Pitt County and growing our, the teacher leadership. That then goes back to the $7.7 million grant, goes back into our local economy. Just, everyone wants to talk about the red lights, there's the money, it's there, it's still under litigation, so I think I just shared that with you. Not much to say, other than we did have a case in June, that we're still waiting to hear the results from that one. But there's still, right now, there's $1.2 million there that is viable for us to spend, hopefully, at some point. Funding challenges, one of the things that happened over the last couple of years, for whatever reason, the General Assembly, and I've certainly talked to our legislators about it, has taken away flexibility that school systems had for the longest time. And one of the things they did was, we used to be able to take one pot of money, we could trade it in, and actually hire additional teachers. We've done that for years. Any good finance department, and you know, our finance department has won awards about every year in a row there, Deborah, so we've been able to do that and get more teachers. Well, the General Assembly decided that, for whatever reason, that wasn't good. So, but anyway, so we've actually lost teachers because they took away our flexibility. We lost some ESL positions, English as a second language, and our AIG positions. And also, what we've also lost is some just regular old teachers out of the whole group because of that lack of flexibility. This year, because we don't have a state budget yet, we're still down about $200,000 that should go to the early college. You remember last year, they said, you can open your early college, but we're not going to fund it. So we opened it and funded ourselves out of fund balance with the expectation, they were going to fund it this year, but since we don't have a budget yet, we don't have that yet. We do expect that to show up, though. I keep hoping. We also were expecting some transportation dollars for exceptional children. We have, if you're dealing with McKinney-Venter or the homeless students, we have to transport kids, and we have different means for transporting certain students. So we were expecting additional money to fund that. Plus, if you remember, there's a lot of talk about school supplies that were going to be given directly to teachers. That money is locked up, you know, at this point, waiting on a budget to be passed. That was not in any of the little mini-budget bills, so that money is still there, waiting for that. Now, that doesn't mean we don't have classroom supplies. We got the money for classroom supplies we had last year. So we have bought classroom supplies. We have, you know, bought paper and things like that. Just a quick update on capital projects. We'll save most of this until we get to our January meeting. save most of this until we get to our January meeting. This is our training building. This is part of the federal grant. This is over on Allen Road. If you've drive by there, it's the old rug shop that was there for the longest time. That building, which is in front of our bus, new bus garage, will be our new training facility. Should be moving in first week or so of, of January. So that'll be our, our new training facility for our teachers, our secure corridor buildings. Remember, we started, we started a couple of years ago, the county commissioners funded some money for that last year, about a million dollars ahead, so we could go ahead and get started on that. We have 25 schools that have been completed. Remember, we started this beforehand. We still have several to go. And AG Cox, obviously, since we're going to talk about AG Cox in a minute, will be completed when we actually do the renovations to that building. There is AG Cox. The very front of the school, if you know AG Cox, the two-story building in the front was built in 1936. That part of the building is what will be renovated and replaced. And you can see what the building will look like going throughout the back. I'll show you a little bit on what's new. If you look at that chart, you can see areas that are shaded, the new administration wing. You can see a new 500 classroom wing. New cafeteria area will be expanded to be twice as big and some additional classrooms. Plus, we'll enclose it all. So all the buildings will be connected. So that's, that's part of our 2019 lobs request. I think the county commissioners were, I think I saw that in your agenda a couple of weeks ago. I think you're aware of that. We are at a, right now, that diagram or those buildings are about to go out to bid hopefully this month. We'll get those back in February, January, and hopefully be by February have bids in hand and ready to go. And we'll be better to get ready to award that in February. Security grant. Last year, we, the state gave us a security grant. We got about $125,000. We did several different items with that. This year, we got another $125,000 or so. We've added more access doors, which are the swiper cards, to especially a lot of our schools where kids go in and out certain doors, especially like playgrounds and things. So putting those into high need, high-traffic areas so teachers can get in and out with their students easier. School resource officers. We requested additional resource officers a year or so ago. We actually got funding from the states. We hired, I believe, 14 more resource officers between all those different departments across Pitt County. At this point, I'm currently working with DPI because they have not given us a way to renew that grant. So we're working closely with them to renew that grant, hopefully in the next month or so. So hopefully, I'll be able to come back and tell you that we'll be able to get that grant again. As you remember, that grant was 400, about $430 from the state, and we used $230 to match it from the, from a federal line item. So there's no local money in any of those SROs at this point. It's federal and state. So we're trying to make sure we can keep as many of those positions as possible. Every single day. Kind of questions?
Questions?
Yeah. Twenty-six SROs.
Yes, sir.
And how, do those, some of those work multiple schools?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So what is the, the goal for the SROs?
Eventually, you'd love to be able to get one per school.
Uh huh.
One per school, and maybe some of our bigger high schools will be able to keep their two. Right now, the three biggest high schools have two. Every other school, the middle schools all have one, and the elementary schools and K-8 schools, for the most part, share between themselves.
And can you say anything about teacher retention? Faculty, can you, how is, how is?
With, what we're seeing with our grant, the retention is about 95% in those programs. So we know the grant is working. County-wide, it's about 15% teacher turnover, which means about 15% of the teachers leave every year. State average is about 15%.
Is that steady? Is that 15% is pretty steady?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Obviously, it's, in today's world, it's a whole lot easier to invest in your teachers and try to keep them than it is to, to start new. And by the time you train them all, the amount of money it takes to, to train new employees, it's, you're better off spending it on them to keep them.
How about Teach America?
We use Teach for America. We probably have 20, about 20 Teach for America teachers. We also have visiting, what we call visiting international faculty teachers who come from other countries, you know, the Philippines, other countries around the world, to teach in our, in our schools as well.
And those would stay?
They, those can stay five years. Teach for America is two or three. Is that about it? So, so Teach for America is two. Something, we had some who've been here since we started three, four years ago. Stay with us.
In that 15% that are leaving?
Oh, yeah.
Is that, how, how much of that is from the foreign teachers and the Teach for America?
Well, the visiting international faculty stay for five years. So every five years, they, they could rotate out. So that's, but you're talking 20, 20 to 35 teachers. One or two percentage points that may add to it, or half a percent. It's, but it's ones that we have open positions now that we need to, we are very aggressive in getting teachers to fill our classrooms. And not only that, the, the teachers coming from, you know, from foreign, the other countries are experienced teachers. They're, they're not, you know, Teach for America students or, or teachers are great. They're very energetic. They want to be with our students. But they have mostly just graduated college and are first-year teachers. Visiting international faculty teachers are teachers that have been teaching, you know, and maybe they came from Jamaica, maybe they came from Philippines, been teaching for years. So they have a lot of experience that they bring.
You have another question down this way?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Doctor.
Yes, ma'am.
Linker for your report. I'm very concerned about out-of-school suspension and the comparison point, out-of-school suspension of students, because that impact our society. If they're out of school, you said they are not learning. And when they're not learning, they're doing other things when they're not being in the classroom. So a report on your out-of-school suspension and the number of students that leave your schools and go straight to, to law enforcement, I was trying to find a, a good word to say, but when they leave school, there's been, they go to, I don't want to say incarceration, but they go into the system of law enforcement.
Sure.
So, and another thing I hear parents talk about is the fact that the students can't write their name. And not only can they not write their name, they can't read what is written in cursive. So whatever you do about that, or is that happening? Is that going to be the thing nowadays?
Teach cursive in third grade to every student. We do teach cursive to every student.
You do? You do? How long, how long you been doing that?
Forever.
Okay. So the student who come and can only print their name, just not making the grade?
They're, they're being taught cursive, how to write their names, how to read cursive. Yes, ma'am.
Checkbooks and banking.
Sure.
And the normal, the normal days of life that get the families moving forward and, and going forth. Do you have classes now that address that situation, that they know that money doesn't grow on trees?
Well, my kids don't know that, but I'll tell you, we have taught a personal finance class in our high schools to every student who wanted it. Starting next year, it is actually going to be a requirement that every student takes a personal finance class to graduate. With next year's ninth graders, we're probably going to roll it into where it's ninth and 10th graders as well, but it's going to be a personal finance class taught through our social studies department, exactly what you just said. That was one of the things that, you know, when I said I interviewed kids, interviewed these, you know, high school seniors. And one of the things they told me was, we don't know enough about money. And that's one of the things they said. So we've been actually working on getting that a little bit better rate than where we are now, getting more of our students involved. That's actually going to be built into our strategic plan, that these students, that we're going to measure these students in their personal finance. Do they know how to do that? Can they do that? Are we showing them how to do that? How to write checks and how to balance your checkbook and how to get a loan and how much does a loan actually really cost? You only borrow $1,000, how much you actually have to pay back? You know, so those are the things we are investing in. And the state has actually made that a requirement as well, starting next year.
Good. There, there's another thing. Parenting and discipline presents a problem for all of our departments within the county. And, and the children are much bigger. I mean, you got elementary students taller than I am, and I'm more than five. And my concern is the, the fact of some of the laws that have, you can't do, and how do you address the concern of a student challenging, I guess I found a good word, challenging the educators? And, and, and that the educators are not able to defend themselves appropriately from the bully of a child?
Well, it goes back to relationships. I mean, hopefully, your, your teachers and your principals are working with every kid every day to build those relationships and working with the family as much as they possibly can. You know, some, some cases are obviously a lot more harder than others. But I know we, we-
Because no, respect is not taught nowadays.
Well, that's something-
And integrative as well. So it concerns me and it weighs heavily on programs that, then you got to get social services and law enforcement involved. I think the school, if they can, I don't, I don't know how you're going to do it, but if you're going to come up with a better way or some way that you can address that problem, I think all of us can be better as far as learning is concerned.
Sure.
Because respect goes a long ways in the classroom.
I, I don't disagree. I'm not sure if we have all those answers. I'll write that book and I'll, I'll build a new school with my name on it or something. But, but that's going to be, that's, that's a tough challenge. And I agree with you 100%, you know. But it's going to be a tough challenge.
Do you create a report on discipline?
We talk about it with our principals monthly.
And what they are and, and the results of where, how they-
That goes back to the slide I shared with you about a resilience training, where we're actually teaching our, working with our, our staff, our counselors, our social workers, our psychologists, our principals, our teachers, to understand what these students are dealing with and how to work with them at their level and where they are. So, so as they're moving forward, we can build that relationship. But you got to understand where that, what that student is, is dealing with at the time. And that's what we've been training a lot of our school administrators and teacher leaders on, is to understand the child as much as possible. Because you, if you don't know where they're coming from, it's going to be a pretty, you know, if you don't understand the, the student, it's going to be pretty tough to teach them. So that's something we're spending a lot of time training our teachers on.
My final question is, this board voted for an increase in taxes so that, that hopefully, because I had to get a room from the attorney, that the classroom personnel can receive supplemental income. And when I'm talking about classmen or personnel, these are the, the actual place of where the student actually get the instructions for learning, that classroom, rather than administration. Have that been addressed within your administrators?
Been addressed with the Board of Education?
Yeah.
Yes. In fact, the Board of Education has, has, at our last work session, work session has approved a 6% supplement and put it on consent agenda for tonight's meeting.
All right. Thank you.
So starting January, it'll be a 6% supplement moving forward.
For?
All classroom teachers.
Classroom teachers?
Correct.
And no assistance within that classroom?
Classroom teachers.
Last question. I know I said that was my last one. SROs and body cameras. And I know Commissioner Alex brought that up. If there's no discipline, no disparate personnel, that it's important both sides of the coin. What schools do not have them?
What schools do not have SROs right now? Every, is that?
Fully.
Fully, well, all of our elementary schools and K-8 schools share. So all those schools have a 50% or part-time SRO.
Any body cameras in your school?
I don't think so. That's a question for the sheriff. I assume she's discussing about it.
Department-based.
That's department-based. I think the, the Greenville PD may have body cameras. The Sheriff's Department, I know, does not yet. I'm not sure about, Farmville does. Farmville, Farmville does. So several schools do. Yes, ma'am.
And exterior of the, the facilities, because you got 38 campuses, I think you said.
Right.
So do you see the comings and goings? And, and you know why I'm asking this question?
I know exactly why you're asking.
It relates to some of the things that have happened in other states, as far as people coming in from the outside and harming children. Do you have a, a visual technology for those kinds of interests?
What we currently have is, is, to be honest, not very adequate. And that's why it's been a, a request from the county commissioners for about 1.3 million dollars to fund the last three years. And we're still, you know, I know that's on our next, that's something that was discussed again last couple of weeks ago. But that's something that we're hoping that we'll be able to look at and have that kind of, that conversation about. And we are, and we are looking at high-need areas and putting in some, just special cameras in certain places ourselves. We've already done that with a few buses as well. I know that's been a request as well for bus cameras. In some areas, some buses, we've actually added the, the camera systems ourselves and put those in. And we'll continue to do that. Our current budget will hopefully offer about $100,000 to where we can do some of those buses, additional buses, and some additional entryways or gyms or wherever we feel we need them the most.
Thank you for your support and your responses.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
But you'll get some more questions afterwards.
Scott.
Thank you, Chairman McLawhorn. Just want to bring Claire to get to comment to the question to Dr. Linker on the school supplements. The, the Board of County Commissioners do not approve school supplements. We provide a lot of funding to the school system. The school board actually decides how to use that funding. So through the budget process, this board did not approve any type of supplements directly.
That's why I asked. I wanted to know who it was from.
Thank you.
We can't ask about this, my county manager.
Sure. You, you can ask. I mean, as Dr. Linker said, there's no state budget yet. They have not been able to fully determine their fiscal year 1920 overall budget due to the lack of a state budget.
Right. Correct.
Commissioner?
Thank you for your report. Did you give us a rollout date for the program as what do we want the children to be able to do at graduation?
We're hoping, we've, internally, we've collected all the data and putting that together now. We're expecting to share that with the board in the spring, and that'll be part of our new strategic plan going into next school year.
Any other questions or comment?
I just want to say, as a parent of two in public school, thank you and your board for what you do for our children.
Dr. Linker, you said, I think you mentioned, you have 24 open enrollment schools here in Pitt County?
Yes, sir.
Is that, that's the total number of schools when you said open enrollment schools?
We have 38 schools, if you count Pitt Academies, and 37 different schools, 30, what did I say, 24 open enrollment?
Uh huh. You know, I, I'm, I'm concerned about the fact that the students eating meals every, every, every morning. I, I think that's important that a child is nutritionally fed in terms of, you know, being productive in the classroom. I don't know what we can do, but I think that, I would like to see us reach out to some federal program more and get every, every child the ability to eat. That is a, that is very alarming to me to think a child is going to school hungry and can't eat. What can we do better to make sure that every child in Pitt County are eating and not have the cold sandwich when the other people are eating warm meals?
Well, I can tell you that we don't take away food or deny a kid, deny a student lunch. We're trying to figure out how to actually fund that because it is very expensive. But right now, I, I think you said 24 open enrollment schools. If you're going to switch over to lunch, we have 22, what we call CEP schools, community engagement programs, where, where though, every, every one of those 22 schools do eat, eat free, breakfast and lunch. We were able to expand that by four schools this year, this year we're in now. So hopefully, we can expand that. And I know at one point, the General Assembly, it was discussed, I think Senator Jackson, put a bill out there to, to fund it for every school across the state that would, you know, for free breakfast and lunch for every, every student. And that would obviously be the best plan. I think there, there's a ton of research that'll tell you, the students eat breakfast and lunch, perform a whole lot better than the kids who don't. So we certainly know that, that, that's, that's a viable piece to our instructional day. And I agree, we needed to get it to all, all, every school.
The last question I have is your cyber bullying. I, I noticed that that has increased all over the nation in terms of that. And I'm sure Pitt County is experiencing that. What are we doing to combat cyber bullying?
That's, that's a, that's a tough one there, Chairman McLawhorn. We are educating parents. We've had our parents' education program, the Parents Republic Schools of Pitt County met a week or two ago to talk about bullying and what that looked like and how to help your, your child get through that. And also help, we also work with our students to, to look at what bullying is and help prevent it from the student's side as well. Just trying to make sure that you're there. But, you know, we have the See Something, Say Something app, whether that's bullying or whether that's a, a dangerous situation at a school. I said See Something, Say Something app. That's the state level. We have our own app that does the same thing. But that's kind of the program we've been working on with our students. And it goes back to your- And it goes back to your, your social workers and your counselors and that relationship piece. Knowing who is, who has potential or who has been, been, um, bullied or picked on and making sure they're reaching out to that student on a daily basis, make sure that the students come to school and feel someone's looking out for them.
I, I want to thank you for your, 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 your fine program and what are you do, what you're doing in Pitt County for the school. Uh, and all of your staff, I want to say that, uh, we're very appreciative of, of the initiative that you're taking in terms of working with all, all, all students. Commissioner.
Uh, I have a question about the Sadie Salter program. Where does that fit into your school programs?
Which, uh, part? Sadie Salter, the pre-K part or the Pitt Academy part?
Um, the pre, the pre-K.
I mean, that's just, NC pre-K is a, is a state program. We also have our exceptional children's pre-K program there as well. So that is one of our, um, uh, one of our schools that we, we, they don't get test scores or things like that. But, um, but we, that's one of the programs we run. They have a SRO as well that goes through there on a daily basis. Um, they have all the doors in place and the swiper card, just like every other school we have.
But the program is a special program there or?
Yeah, that, that school is, now is, is what's called the North Carolina Pre-K Program. That's about ten or twelve classrooms there, plus the pre-K is in about sixteen other classrooms throughout the county. Um, plus we have eight or nine, uh, exceptional children's pre-K programs there as well. So that's, that's, if you look at the building, you know, from the parking lot, that's on one side of the building. Our Pitt Academy program, uh, is on the other side.
Okay. Thank you.
I hear no other questions or comments. I want to thank you again.
Thank you.
And keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Have a great day.
At this time, we have our managers' reports. Scott, Ashley Wood.
Okay, thank you, Chairman McLawhorn. On my report, several things to mention. Your next meeting date for the month of December will be Monday, December sixteenth at six P M. That will be the last meeting of the calendar year. Um, you'll be considering later on in the agenda, the proposed meeting calendar for, um, calendar year twenty twenty, as well as the budget calendar. Um, item B is, we, we want to remind the Board of the Thriving Small Town Summit that we held this, um, Thursday, December fifth, from nine to twelve, at the Biden Administrative Building. Um, item C, we're, we're happy to recognize Commissioner Anne Huggins and her recent appointment, appointment from NACO, which is the National Association of Counties, our national, um, organization. She's been appointed to the Human Services and Education Policy Steering Committee. And I want to thank her for her willingness to serve and to, um, participate on that committee.
Thank you, Anne.
Um, item D, wanted to mention, I wasn't sure if the PIO is gonna put this on the screen, but if not, yeah, here we go. We have our first ever, um, Pitt County Holiday Safety Fair that is, I think primarily sponsored by our Department of Emergency Management. This will be at Alice F. Keane Park. This will be Thursday, December fifth, from forty-eight P M. This is a family, a fun family event, promotes, um, seasonal safety and help those in need. There'll be a, um, live music, a petting zoo, food trucks with hot coffee and hot chocolate. There'll be a home heating and cooking safety information. There'll be a touch of truck hands-on display. And also there'll be a, a donation collection for the Howells Center. Um, donations of new underappartments are welcome to benefit children with special needs. Anybody has questions on this, they can call the Department of Emergency Management at two five two nine oh two thirty-nine fifty. And, um, we look forward to the, um, public coming out to participate in this free event. And two other things real quick, um, Mr. Chairman, on A. One is to, um, at Senate Communication, Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving regarding, um, the joint meeting of the Board of County Commissioners and the Pitt County Development Commission regarding, um, economic development. At your social call meeting on Sunday, November twenty-fourth, you passed a motion that the two entities will hold a joint meeting before the end of the calendar year, before December thirty-first of, um, um, two thousand nineteen. Last Thursday, there was a meeting of, um, the two chairs, the vice chairs, the designees, and myself and the county attorney to discuss, to have dialogue about the joint meeting, try to come up with some tentative plans and a date. And the group found, unanimous of the group, we thought it would be best to postpone this to the, to the month of January of twenty twenty due to all that's going on. We did have a lot of, we felt like positive strides forward in the conversation we had with the group. So, um, really need at this point, a vote by the board to allow this, cause you did, you did motion and direct that this happened before the end of the calendar year. So the board-
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
With that decision, where does the personnel stand?
Uh, the, the, um, you still have a, I think we have a commitment from the, um, Pitt County Development Commission that no personnel or policy decisions would be made in, as my understanding is, until that joint meeting is held. And I don't think that has changed. So there should be no personal changes to our knowledge.
Okay.
I move, I move for acceptance of this plan.
Has been moved and probably seconded or accepted this plan. All in favor of the motion, let's vote.
The, the motion, I didn't understand what the, I just, I just heard so moved for acceptance of what?
The, the delay of having the joint meeting since December, January.
The joint meeting will be held in January.
Okay. I just want to know what I'm looking at. I'm pressing the button.
I've already advanced it and that motion has passed.
Commissioner White?
I'm not looking at it.
Will count with the prevailing side.
Two other things real quick, Mr. Chairman. Wanted to just update, update the board regarding the, um, strategic plan initiative. You're aware, you, you want our staff to, um, commence forward with, with, um, steps to, to go forward on this. We did send out our R Q, which is a request for qualifications. We received, um, responses from eight different firms. We'll be vetting those, bringing back recommendations to you to, um, hire a firm to help assist in that process and then moving forward with that into the, um, the new year. The, the last item I wanted, I was gonna report on this, but I thought maybe to follow up to the, um, Pitt County Schools' report on the, the free lunch program in the schools, the twenty-four schools having the free breakfast and lunch program. Kind of ties back into, um, a call I got, I guess it was late Wednesday afternoon from the Department of Commerce, North Carolina Department of Commerce, regarding the tier ranking system in North Carolina. All one hundred, all one hundred counties are ranked either tier one, two, or three, depending upon what level of, um, what I call economic prosperity, um, as such that each county has. Pitt County has historically been a, a tier two county. Um, we're being moved to a tier one county, which is the, the lower ranking. I guess the, the good news on that is there are more grant opportunities. There, I think there are, even for school funding, there's a pot of money we can get, capital funding, um, greater, greater pull and match on. There's greater dollars coming from the state in terms of incentives for new, new and expanding industries. The, um, the bad news is, just like the twenty-four schools that are on the free reduced lunch, that's not necessarily a good thing. We'd be better off having zero schools with free, free reduced lunch and having a higher tier ranking, which means that overall our vitality economically would be much higher as such. But, uh, a press release, I think, may have came out on that, that we are being moved from a tier two to tier one. I did ask if we could appeal that. Um, last year at this time, we also received notification that we're being changed from tier two to tier one. And then they tweaked the numbers and we moved back to tier two. I believe, as I understand it, only two counties are being changed from two to one, uh, I believe Pitt and Onslow. But we'll follow up on that and see. I mean, it's kind of good news and bad news depending upon how you, how you-
From an economic, from an economic standpoint, um, how does that impact potential development of the Economic Development Group? Does it hit them in any way, shape, or form? I mean, is it preferred for them to operate in a county that's a one or two?
I really think for, for businesses, looking, industry, looking to locate Pitt County, um, whether expanding existing industry or new industry, I don't really think necessarily they pay attention that closely to the tier one, two, and three. It might come down to when you look at the incentives, what incentives are available. And obviously, the, the lower the tier ranking, the more incentives. So, um, again, I'd like to see us at a tier two or tier three, but that's not the reality where we are with tier one, unless we get that appealed back to a tier two.
Would you need a tier one with, with acetaminophen in terms of, of this feeding?
Yes, I mean, I, I, in terms of the feeding of the schools, it's pretty much, um, tied to, I believe, title one funding as such. I, I know the school system does a great job leveraging all the, all they can of that. That's a federal program compared to the tier ranking as a state program.
Chris, did I see you?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for all the questions. At this time, we move to the items for consent.
I move for approval.
Has been moved and probably seconded or approved items for consent. Let's vote. Answers. Item for discussion, rules of procedures.
Mr. Chairman, on page sixty-eight, we have the, as, as required, call forwarding your, um, rules of procedure for the Board of County Commissioners in the first meeting in December. One of those things, among others, is to consider your rules of procedure. And normally in years past, it's been just a affirmation of the existing rules. But we have had some discussion, um, some proposed amendments, just in page sixty-nine. Um, Commissioner Huggins would like to clarify the definitions on a majority vote and supermajority vote. And you'll see the, um, the language underlined, the added. Right now, it says, "Majority vote, five votes shall constitute a majority vote and shall be necessary to pass or defeat any action." Um, the amendment would be add the words for which a majority vote is required by these rules. And then the same thing for supermajority, some votes will be necessary to pass or defeat any action. Period is existing language and it goes on, "Supermajority of seven, the only be waived in an emergency meeting if it's called or a forum is present." So you'd like to add in that first sentence again, "For which a supermajority vote is required by these rules." Um, Commissioner Ward would like to add, uh, not add, but maybe to clarify, in terms of the, the numbering or ordering of business as comes before the board, to have any presentations, um, come before public hearings. So if it's Boy Scouts or whoever it would be, they would have to sit through a series of, um, public hearings. So we'd move those up closer, almost actually right after the approval of the agenda. And then the last one, um, we, our staff would like to, um, add something regarding the, the organizational meeting. Right now, you have in this meeting, one of the things you do is you approve the surety bonds for the different, different public officials that are required to have surety bonds. The, the pretty time the surety bonds cover is actually July one, this passed July through June thirtieth, but we're approving the bonds in December. So it's really kind of out of order. We would like to, um, to amend it so that the surety bonds are approved, will have them approved in June of twenty twenty that will then affect the July one through June thirtieth of, through twenty twenty-one. So what the surety bond you're gonna affect today, or approve today, would be as the rules are, are, are written, so it would not affect that. Also, we'd like to, um, to redo the order structure of the December meeting to the, the last thing on this list, the following four thing. Things, oaths of office, election of officers, seating arrangement, and rules of procedure. I believe right now, the last two are flip-flopped, were rules of procedure before the seating arrangement. So that's all we have.
I have a, uh, a concern raised.
Has been a motion made, but- It has been motion seconded made and we're going on with the, with the question.
My just, my question is on this. You didn't ask for questions. You didn't ask for any comment as it relates to the, uh, proposed amendments to the rules of procedures, and I thought we would have a time to discuss it.
We, um, we did send them out, the clerk sent them out, I believe, in the Friday packet. And did you email them too? Requesting, just in the Friday packet. So in the Friday packet, weekly info packet, we sent out the rules of procedure with a cover memo, asking for any commissioners to add suggested changes. Just submit those, and these are what we have at this point in time.
Commissioner, uh, do you have any, uh, specific question you'd like to ask us, sir?
Yes, I want to talk about how we go about the elections of, uh, of the offices to the sport. I think it creates dissensions, divisions, and we should be a team of one. And I think it, it's, the way it's done is divisive. It's very divisive. It should be a bit more, um, uh, routine. It should be so that we are not competitive. We campaign, that's competitiveness. We shouldn't have to campaign, campaign for chair of vice chair. I think it should be an automatic thing and it'll stop some of, uh, uh, I gotta, I gotta find a word that I want to say. Uh, uh, maybe it will help with the, uh, confusion. Maybe that's a, I can't think of the word that I really had in mind. But I think it should be automatic. If you look at the, um, the sheet that I asked Kimberly to distribute among us, I think, uh, uh, one of the, you have, uh, Commissioner Ward, Commissioner Cosson, and Commissioner, um, McLawhorn as long members of this board. And the rest of us are five years or less. And it has become a competitive thing, just like campaigning. And that create conflicts and problems and concerns. And then come to this board for, for, uh, gripe and all this stuff we had, uh, uh, in the last couple of meetings. I like to see us operate with harmony and respect each other, and we've lost some of that. So I like to see us, uh, uh, address that issue so that we can operate like human beings, doing the will and the improvement for this community as a whole, as Pitt County, as one, and as a unit body for being kind and, and, and respectful with integrity and honesty. So, uh, I think it should be more of a routine. Um, and then maybe some of the labels, I like to see it a routine. Because this board, uh, the power of the chair and vice chair is important to citizens. And they watching what we do. And I don't like what I'm hearing when I'm floating around in the community. When you vote to not let people get training and education, that's serious. When you vote to, um, send the message in the land, the way we conduct business, that you have biases among the board, that's serious. We should be a team of one, doing the business for this county as a team of prosperity and growth and, and, and caring and embracing what the total county needs. And we are not leaving any portion out. I like to see it change because the chair is the one who appoints to boards as liaison. And some of us remain it forever and you never get to know what the others are. And some of us, you walk right in and you walk right into the best boards and, and, and commissions that we have. I think we need to look at that and we need to stop doing business as usual and get on with doing the business that the community wanted to do. That's what I wanted to say. But we already have a motion on the floor. We, I didn't get a chance to discuss it, but at least I've had a chance to express my feelings. I don't like what's happening. I don't like it at all. And I think it's very divisive. Uh, in, in other words, for you out sitting out there, you don't know what I'm saying in divisive, very dividing, very discriminatory, very hostile. All those ugly words that shouldn't even be on the duty of this diocese. We should be doing a duty for the people to make our quality of life better for everyone who live in Pitt County. I guess that's my sermon for today, Alex.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. And second?
I think you called a motion out of order.
All in favor? Motion. Thank you very much. A motion has passed.
And I think the chair should be looking at everyone to see if they have discussion before we get there. Because I thought it was very, uh, 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 rude for you to not hear what I had to say about the rules of procedure. And I did not get my packet because I had company, because the packets were delivered early and I was out of place.
At this time, we, uh, should move on to the items for decision. Uh, Scott?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have before you a proposed meeting calendar for next year, for calendar year twenty twenty, as well as the proposed budget calendar that we'll use to develop the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-one operating budgets.
Do we need a motion to approve?
I have a question about this. Will the budget, uh, be, um, recorded or advertised, televised?
We, we always have. I mean, we, the budget workshops have been advertised, the, obviously, the public hearing is advertised. Um, I don't think there's been any part of the process. We have not, um-
Cause we're meeting in a little room downstairs.
We do a C.I.P. workshop downstairs that is capital-related, and I believe we record that, but if the board would like to have that put on the television, we'd be more happy to do so.
I just want to know, because I don't know all those things. If I don't see a whatever, I don't know. And if you don't say it's being televised, I don't know. I know we said that the special meeting was televised, but anything that's not away from here, I don't know if, unless I'm told.
We have the capability of doing that if it's the board's desire.
Motion to approve.
I second it.
Motion to approve this budget calendar for twenty, twenty twenty-one. All in favor, let it be known by your vote. It passes. Thank you very much. Uh, we have, Brian, if you would, uh, budget amendment with the Sheriff's Department and federal inmate revenue.
Uh, yes, it is the pleasure of the board. Um, back in September, at our second board meeting, uh, we did present to you guys the opportunity to create a new capital reserve for the Sheriff's Office, uh, based on excess fed bed revenue. Um, the purpose of the reserve was to look at capital, C.I.P. items that you all have approved through the C.I.P. process, and our target was to take the audit that we were currently at that time in review of, that was presented to you this morning, and we were going to look at those funds as an opportunity, um, to be the initial funding of this new capital reserve. Uh, based on our audit that we just had performed, we're looking at four-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-three dollars of excess fed bed revenue. This is revenue outside of what we, uh, had budgeted for, uh, in F.Y. twenty nineteen. Uh, if it's your will, we will, we will, we will transfer that money out of our fund balance, and we will place that money into this capital reserve. Um, at the current moment, uh, the Sheriff's Office is looking over their capital improvement, uh, projects. Um, you will get a list in January, and it's our goal is to come back after the C.I.P. workshop and, and come back again, engage you all to see if you want to use some of this reserve funding for those projects.
At the current moment, you're just putting it in a fund to set aside for a need for the sheriff's office?
Right. The way, the way it's written, um, no money can be spent from that fund, uh, without your approval. So we'll have to come back to you at the time, um, when, when the time is ready to present those projects to you.
Okay.
It is very similar to what we've done in the past.
Well, this will be the first one of these for the Sheriff's Office.
First one of these, it's like this, but it's always communicated with us, is what I mean.
Right. That's how, that's how you guys wrote it back in September, was that you'd have to approve the funds going into the reserve and the funds being spent in the reserve.
Now, what was that question?
Which question?
I didn't hear anything, uh, Commissioner White said.
I just asked him, um, it's being put aside, and it's, it's not being spent right now, it's just being put aside in a separate fund for the Sheriff's Office. They will, at a later date, determine what they want to use it for and come back and talk again.
And your response was that, yes, it's being put there for the sheriff?
Right now, it's just procedurally being moved from fund balance, the county's general fund balance, available fund balance, into the reserve fund for the Sheriff's Office for capital projects.
For the Sheriff's Office, for capital, capital building, right? Okay.
Commissioner Coulson?
Thank you.
So, being capital, does it, would that cover body cameras?
No, not as constituted as we have it right now, because body cameras technically are not a capital project item.
That's my point. So, would it not, did we not talk at that time that this money would be set aside such that it might be available to help fund?
We did at that, back in May, we did talk about using this excess money to help fund the body cameras, but through the process of looking at the daily rate going from seventy-eight dollars to a hundred dollars, we identified revenues there, um, that would be able to fund the program moving forward for body cameras. So, in essence, we, we, we found a, a new revenue source to pay for the body cameras, and this is additional on top of that.
So this is twenty-two dollars per inmate per day is extra, is not included in this?
Right. This was seventy-eight dollars per day that we ended last fiscal year, June thirtieth.
And we are in a position to fully fund the body cameras for the sheriff?
We, we are. As, as we move over the next year and a half, uh, I don't, I don't foresee the need of any new revenue, um, from the Sheriff's Office for body cameras.
One thing you have on the C.I.P. today, in this year's capital improvement plan for fiscal year nineteen twenty, is phase three of the H.V.A.C. needs at the detention center, and that's about four-hundred-thousand dollars. These monies could be used for that purpose. We have talked to the sheriff about that. She wants to go back and look at her overall capital needs and come back to you at a later time, but that would be one thing that's currently in the adopted C.I.P. that would be in compliance with the motion you passed two, two, three meetings ago.
Okay. And there, and there's nothing that says we have to, it's a reserve. Um, we can build it up, or we can spend it. That's really up to you all, how we'd like to spend that money.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm gonna get to you next, Commissioner Huggins.
Are we ready for a motion?
Yes.
Uh, yes, yes.
That's what I'm talking about right there.
Yeah, okay. Chris, you have, have a comment?
I was wondering if we were prepared for a motion.
Okay.
I, I like to say that we have been talking about the importance of body cameras. It is good for residents, it's good for the, uh, the, the officers, and it's good for both ways, for body cameras. And I don't see why, I'm gonna use one of Glenn's, why we keep kicking that can down the road when we have a need that can help our citizen and help our, uh, law enforcement people?
The, the body cameras have been funded, approved, and they're being pursued by the Sheriff's Office and will be implemented. That, that can has not been kicked, that can has been opened and is being poured out, personally.
Yes.
That's right.
And if I may, I can tell you that...
I'll second this motion if you need it. Okay.
My office, finance department, and the Sheriff's Office are in continual communication, looking at the best options for body cameras. Uh, the sheriff has invited me personally to the next demonstration, uh, for the last model. I believe they've looked at six models, and this will be the sixth one, um, that they're looking at, and they want to test and review before they make any purchase. So, the funding is in place, but we just want to make sure when we do fund, that we're getting the right camera. Um, I have stressed to the Sheriff's Office that, um, the cameras that we end up choosing, um, we want to make sure are the best ones, so they don't have to come back to you a year later looking for a different camera. So we're just doing our due diligence, um, as part of the plan that we rolled out back in September, trying to get all our cameras in the next calendar year of twenty twenty.
That includes storage?
Yes, storage is a big part of the equation.
Thank you.
And, and I think the sheriff has voiced the concern that she's very pleased with the movement of this body camera, the progress that, that's been made on this. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Shall we vote? Thank you very much. John Silverman. We are gonna have the bad debt write-off.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning.
And the commissioners. Um, with review of county finance folks, we are asking to write off a bad debt of five-hundred-thirty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty dollars and seventy-seven cents. Uh, that represents three years of bad debt. This is, uh, debt that is felt to be uncollectible, um, and is in line with previous, uh, debt write-offs that have been done at the Health Department, averaging on the, the range of about a hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars a year of services that we provide that we cannot be compensated for or receive payment for. Um, happy to answer any questions that you all have about that number.
Thank you very much. Have any questions, comments?
Motion to approve the write-off.
Motion to approve?
Second it.
Has been seconded. All in favor, let it be known by your way of voting. Thank you very much, Mr. Pro. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Sir. Uh, appointment and reappointment to the Juvenile Crime Council.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you have to the JCPC Council, a recommendation to reappoint Judge Wendy, Wendy Hazelton on this, and also to appoint, um, Jennifer Matthews. Jennifer Matthews will, um, take an at-large seat that was previously vacated by Judy Baker, or held by Judy Baker.
Chairman, you ready for it?
Yes.
I move to approve the appointment of Jennifer and Wendy.
Okay. Has been moved and promptly seconded, that we, Annala Steve's appointment. Let it be known by your way of voting, please. Thank you very much. At this time, it, we'll move down to your commissioners' comment, and, uh, we will start with Commissioner White.
No comment.
No comment, thank you.
No comment. I'd like to thank board for its confidence in voting me in as vice chair.
Like Echo, uh, Commissioner Coulson, I'd like to thank the board for, uh, nominating me as chairman. I'm gonna try to live up to your expectations. Commissioner?
I was pleased to see our, uh, my fellow commissioners, uh, receiving the portraits of the judges a couple of weeks ago, thanks to Commissioner Ward and Commissioner Huggins for that very, and the, the judges for that very nice ceremony.
Very good. Commissioner Parker, with you.
No comment.
Commissioner Oliver?
No comment, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we were glad to receive it on behalf of the commissioners and the county.
Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Second it.
Second.
Has been moved and promptly seconded, we're now adjourned. Let's vote.